Meeting to order.
People like you bill me nineteen dollars a month.
What's that? Okay. Uh, something was in the background there. I don't know what it was. Anyway, Paul, um, would you please read the verbiage regarding the governor's order?
In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law regarding relating to the 2020 Novell- Novil coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 30th public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points of the meeting. Zoom login instructions. Instructions in the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found on the following web address. WWW dot Falmouth Mass dot U S backslash one, 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 two backslash planning board. Please plan on fifteen, ten to fifteen minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access this meeting. Three, additional public comments may be sent in advance to the meeting through planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Divided email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record and may be read into the record summarized or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the chair. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. Michaela, have we received any submissions in regard to tonight's meeting at this point? Okay. Paul, regarding the minutes, May 12th.
Recommend approval of the minutes of May 12th, 2020 as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I saw Pam's mouth move. Didn't see her hand go up, so. So it's six out of the six who are present. Uh, first on the agenda, planning board discussion slash decision. Applicant William Chalkley, site plan review application for a detached accessory apartment located at four, zero, four Hayeway Road, Holmes and McGrath, the engineering firm. And could I have somebody, um, read the motion, please, in regard to Mr. Chalkley? Does anybody have the decision?
I don't have a copy in front of me, so I'm not able to read it.
All right, okay, does anybody have a copy in front of them?
I have.
An open one.
Pardon? I have it so that I can read it, but I.
Oh, I've got one.
Okay. And do you have it with the one change that we made?
That's in red?
Uh, no. There was a cross-out.
I think this is the one that was sent to us today, but I don't see a cross-out. What I see is something in red.
There's, there's nothing in red on this, is there, Michaela?
No, there, there shouldn't be anything in red. It was, um, there was one sentence that was taken out. Um, there was a typo.
Then I don't have the right one.
Okay. I'd be happy to read it because I do have it in front of me.
Okay.
Okay, so I will move that the planning board vote to approve.
Anyway, so. Yeah, we came up, we did it anyway.
Wait a minute, who's talking? Okay, I move that the planning board vote to approve the application of William Chalkley for the construction of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit at four, zero, four Hayway Road under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Plan of Proposed Accessory Structure prepared for William and Kristen Chalkley for Lot 14, number four, zero, four Hayway Road in Falmouth. Prepared by Holmes and McGrath, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors dated March 4, 2020. Scale one inch equals twenty feet along with construction details and existing floor plans of the primary residence, architrtecturals of the proposed accessory unit, floor plan of the proposed accessory unit, elevations, and photographs with the following. And under the findings, the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240 dash 23i of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240 dash 183b of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two. Excuse me. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner signed by the property owner attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner-occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months the owner-occupant may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months and weekly slash monthly rentals, summer rentals so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the accessory apartment structure will be assigned the address four, zero, four A Hayway Road. Engineering will assign the address when we sign the building permit. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99 dash one. A fixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance. Four, zero, four should be posted on the structure visible as you come up the driveway as well as posted at the driveway intersection with Hayway Road. Six, the applicant show, will install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. And I would need a second now for that. Pam is waving her hand. She's seconding it, okay? Any discussion on this decision? Okay, I don't see anybody wanting to discuss it. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, we've got Bob, Jim, Pam, Charlotte, John, Paul, and myself. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have uh, the applicant is Borrego Solar. Um, I will read it, but Mike McGrath has said that he cannot be with us tonight. And so I would, I we continued it, or we will continue it to July 28th, so I would need a motion to that effect without opening this to continue it to July 28th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Borrego Solar uh, issue ha, is continued to July 28th. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's everybody here, so that's all seven of us in favor of that. Uh, the next one is the applicant Dick Betzig, special permit application and site plan review application to construct a forty-foot-by-eighty-foot prefab storage building for equipment and materials located at three fifty Old Meeting House Road, Cape and Islands Engineering. Is there anyone here? Yes, Paul, you need to read the notification for that.
Uh, notification is public hearing was published in Falmouth Enterprise on June 12th, June 19th, 2020.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak to this? Okay, Michaela, no one is here.
There is someone in the waiting room, um, whose name is showing up as Dick. Uh, I'm, I, the person is on mute. I'm, I'm not sure, Dick, is that?
Yeah, that's how it was the last time. That would be him. So he would have to be elevated.
He, he is elevated. He's currently on mute.
He'd have to be unmuted then.
Hello.
Hi, Dick.
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Um, I'm sorry, we have to redo this, but we do. And so I would have to ask you, could you tilt your screen a little bit? Ah, up a little, no, the other way. Ah, beautiful, thank you. Okay. I will have to ask you to go over in summary what you presented to us the last time.
Okay, so for the overview, as everyone knows, this is in an agricultural landscape operation with a special permit issued in 2017. And it is in a hundred percent compliance with the S and P and agricultural zoning A requirements. The proposed building conforms with the culture of the Falmouth community. Lot coverage will be three percent and twenty percent is allowed. Proposed parking will expand to six point nine percent where we have the allowance of forty. Storm water runoff will not be increased by more than ten percent in a ten-year storm. Building meets and exceeds all setback requirements. Color is representative of a farmhouse and conforms with intended use. Now, I did update the color scheme. Uh, last time we talked about sage green in combination with a taupe color for the, uh, uh, band that goes around it. And unfortunately, being a prefab building, uh, we are limited in color schemes. So I have proposed something very close. It's a, I think, uh, you got that document. It's evergreen instead of
We do have it.
And, okay, so I hope that that is in conformity with what you expected. So based on the current future landscape plan, uh, the significant improvements will further screen activities and have a positive impact, in our opinion. Uh, site use and activities, I can go through that if you wish. Uh, and we consider this a sustainable operation. And I thank you.
I think originally, Mr. Betzig, we did have some questions on site use and operations, so if you can summarize that as well, it would be helpful since this is a review of that moving, of that.
Okay. Essentially, the activities will include screening topsoil, compost, mulch, some firewood. There's no commercial processing involved. It's a manual operation. Um, there's greenhouse activity that includes perennial shrubs and annual shrubs. And there's a nursery, uh, that includes a significant portion of land that's been planted with evergreens. If you folks have gone by it. Uh, Joe has done a pretty nice job in making that entire area with plantings and flowering shrubs. He is considering, uh, also bringing in some honeybees in the future. Uh, so that's essentially it in a nutshell. Uh, and we will, as we agreed to on the last meeting, there's not going to be any kind of mechanical maintenance activities in this shed. It's primarily for storing equipment that's related to the operation.
Okay. Do, does anyone on the planning board have any comments or questions of Mr. Betzig? Jim?
He's submitted a very nice rendering. Is there any way we could show that to the public?
You may, if you wish. That's, that's essentially what we're going to comply with.
In place of my face.
I think there's a better way to do it than.
I'm sure there is, but I don't know whether Michaela has it ready to bring up.
I'm looking for it right now.
Okay.
That worked, Pat. I guess I can see it. It's, it's good-looking building.
It is.
It's fine.
That's why I quickly pulled this out of the package. I had it separated, so.
And there was, uh, one note in the decision, uh, that was in red about, uh, the roof pitch changing so that it's twenty-four feet high instead of twenty-one. And I'm perfectly fine with that. I think it actually is cheaper roof pitches.
Fifty, fifty feet.
Yeah, I think the explanation was.
There's, there's no problem with the alignment or anything, so, uh, there's, there's no issue with that, but I just thought I'd bring it up when somebody else was thinking about that, but twenty-four, twenty-four feet's nothing.
Okay, Pam? Um, no storage of fertilizer?
That's correct. No storage of fertilizer or combustibles.
Or combustibles?
Yeah.
Okay, are you, is there a concrete pad at all?
Yes, the concrete pad is included. Uh, I did submit a plan for it, and it's part of the conditions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from anybody else on the board? Okay. Michaela, has there been any public comment on this project?
No. We have not received any.
Now, we normally do not vote, as you know, on the, um, evening that we first, first see this. Um, but we do have a decision in front of us if you wish to do so. If you wish to vote the decision tonight, I would need to have a motion that we set aside our normal protocol and render a decision tonight.
Everyone has read the decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only reason why I'll agree to it is because this is a redo. I think it's a bad idea to do it tonight, but we've already done it. What?
That's why it's our policy, Jim. That is why it's our policy. So, may I have a motion to the effect that we can vote on this tonight?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we vote on it tonight. And do you all have the decision in front of you or not?
Yes.
I do.
Would there be somebody who would like to, um, read it? It's fairly lengthy, so we can, to some degree, if we just read the motion and under the findings, the height has been changed, so I will leave it to your discretion as to how you do it, but we do need to read the conditions in. I believe, okay? So somebody, please, make the motion. Bob, would you like to?
I, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, I haven't got it in front of me to read.
No, it was moved and seconded that we could vote on it tonight. We all, we did take the vote on that, didn't we?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And so now we need to have a motion read, which is the decision.
I know.
What?
It was moved and seconded. Did we vote to, uh, vote on it?
Yes, we voted to vote on it tonight because this is outside of our normal protocol.
Okay, I don't recall the vote. I just recall the, uh.
Everybody said we did vote on it. I thought we did, but maybe we didn't.
No, 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 we did vote on that.
That's what I thought. So now I need to have somebody read the motion. If nobody wants to, I'll read it again.
Yeah, go ahead, Pat. I, I.
Okay. Okay. I move that the planning board vote to approve the application of Joseph Buciano under Article 39 Site Plan Review and grant a special permit pursuant to Section 240 dash thirty-eight K of the zoning bylaw to a site plan review to construct one forty-foot-by-eighty-foot-by, it's twenty-four feet now, that's the change, high prefab storage building for equipment and materials located at three fifty Old Meeting House Road, East Falmouth. Also shown on Assessors Map 21, Section Eight Parcel Zero One Eight A, Lots Zero Zero Three, as depicted on the plan, proposed building plan prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering dated October twenty-three, twenty nineteen, scale of one inch equals, it should be forty feet, says forty inches on it. So that change should be a correction there. Um, architectural drawings, four sheets prepared by Graber Buildings, J. Buciano, thirty-five hundred Old Meeting House Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, zero, two, five, three, six, agricultural storage dated October fifteen, twenty nineteen. Runoff calculations and drainage area worksheet planned prepared by Falmouth Engineering. Exterior finishes submitted by ResCom via Applicant Agent Amen Clower, LLC, December ten, twenty eighteen. Proposed floor drain, new agricultural building, three fifty Old Meeting House Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, zero to five, two, five, three, six, drawing S K dash one prepared by Michelle Cudillo, P E, Consulting Structural Engineer, dated November twenty, twenty nineteen. Rendering of building JB Landscape, three fifty Old Meeting House Road for the proposed storage building. And then we have the following. Um, there are findings here. Okay, probably that should be read into it. The applicant, Joseph Buciano, is applying to the planning board for site plan review under Section two forty dash one ninety-one and a special permit under Section two forty.
One ninety-one and a special permit.
That kind of fed back. I don't know why. Um, for the construction of one proposed storage building, the proposed building will be a forty-foot-by-eighty-foot-by-twenty-four-foot-high prefab storage building for equipment and materials. Parcels located in the agricultural A zone currently on the site are three greenhouse structures as well as two paved areas and two storage containers located to either side of the rear paved area. Additionally, there is one more storage unit to the northeast side of the property located near a landscape island. The existing lot coverage by structures is currently one point five percent, and the applicant is proposing to increase that to three point three percent. The allowed lot coverage by structures in AGA is twenty percent. Exist, existing structure slash parking slash paving is five point two percent. The applicant is proposing to expand that to six point nine percent. The allowed coverage in AGA is forty percent. The proposed structure is thirty-seven and a half feet from the property, side property line and one hundred seventy-three point eight feet from the rear property line. In addition, the structure is two hundred and ten point seven feet from the nearest front property line. The property is surrounded by AGA on all sides with the nearest surrounding districts being AGB and RA over seven hundred feet behind the property. The applicant is requesting the height of the building be twenty-four feet, which is allowed per the Falmouth zoning bylaws, Section two forty dash seventy-eight, which states for agricultural uses only, structures within agricultural districts may have a maximum height of fifty feet as measured from the base of the structure to the highest point. Um, it's not supposed to have any adverse effects. We have findings in regard to Section two forty dash thirty-eight K of the zoning bylaw, and it complies with all of those requirements. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application for site plan and special permit proposal to construct one twenty, forty-foot-by-eighty-foot-by-twenty-four-foot prefab building for agricultural storage will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, and that the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to two forty dash one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for occupancy of the new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. The previous decision of the planning board for a special permit under Section two forty dash thirty-eight K dated September thirteen, twenty seventeen for Joseph Buciano is hereby adopted and made part of this decision in its entirety, including but not limited to the conditions imposed therein. Three, pursuant to Section two forty-two twenty-one of the zoning bylaw, this special permit shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause. Four, the purpose of the building shall be for storage of farm, agricultural, and landscape equipment to include but not limited to backhoe, tractors, tillers, mowers, hedge trimmers, et cetera. One point one, no storage of any combustible materials will be allowed, including fertilizer. One point two, no activities related to typical mechanical work slash maintenance of power equipment such as welding, tune-up, oil changes, et cetera, are allowed. Five, the proposed building will include a slab on grade per the plan by Michelle Cudillo dated November twenty, twenty nineteen. Six, the exterior of the building color scheme will be a two-tone from the following combinations. A, skirt just below the windowsill, ash. B, trim, white. C, main body, including gable ends, evergreen. D, roof, charcoal gray. E, appropriate, appropriate landscape shall be provided at the discretion of JB Landscape. Seven, the applicant will provide a sign with the address, number three fifty, near the driveway intersection with Old Meeting House Road. Eight, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the approved permit. Nine, the permit, uh, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of Butters or public right-of-way. Is there a second to this motion, please? Bob?
Second.
Okay, are, is there any discussion of this motion? Okay. Please, all in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay, all seven of us present have voted in favor of this project. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, and everybody have a good evening.
You also.
Oh, bye-bye now.
Bye. Okay, the next is, um, the applicant is Timothy Leadham, trustee of RNG Realty Trust, special permit application to allow parking in the front yard located at twelve oh nine East Falmouth Highway, Cape and Islands Engineering. Is there anybody here for this project? Wait a minute, Paul. Is there anybody here for this project?
Hello.
Aha, okay, Paul, would you please read the notice, the notifications?
Public notice of this, uh, meeting was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on June twelfth and June nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay. And here for the applicant, we have Kevin Power and Matt Costa. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. Uh, and I represent the applicant Timothy Leadham, the trustee of the RNG Realty Trust. He's the owner of twelve oh nine East Falmouth Highway, which is the location of Bosens East Falmouth Marine. This property, again, you have to excuse me because I'm not quite sure how to handle the whole redo, so I'm going to try to keep my, uh, summarize my, my last application, but I don't know how much detail we need, so it's fine that we need more at any point.
Kevin, if I may interrupt you, I, I think the board would appreciate a summary, you know, that hits all the points, but probably not any details unless we ask for details when we bring up the discussion.
Happy, happy to do so. So, um, the applicant's proposing to demolish, the raise and rebuild the existing ramshackle collection of buildings at the site. They're non-conforming and in some significant disrepair. The site has poorly defined parking. And those structures will be replaced with a single building, which is about six thousand square feet, which represents a reduction of over twenty-two thousand square feet in a floor area. The lot coverage by structures reduced by, from thirty-two percent to seven. Um, and the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is reduced from eighty percent to sixty-eight percent. Um, the use of the property will remain the same as does the number of slips. The use of the property will remain the same as does the number of slips. Our proposal eliminates all of the existing nonconformities, improves the parking configuration, and represents a substantial and significant improvement to the property. Uh, we are applying for a special permit for allow parking in the front yard. Uh, because the nature of the site is marine, so it makes sense and is best to have the building located closer to the water. Parking in the front is required to accommodate that same number of parking spots as present. And which are presently located in the front yard. I would like to take a few moments to address some of the confusion that seemed to come up at the June ninth hearing. And we did submit correspondence to this effect last week. Uh, but I think we have to take just a few moments to go over those areas. I think it might be helpful. There were a few areas that seemed to have some some confusion, um, that I think we can, we can work through. Uh, this is not a site plan review. Uh, this is only relative to the parking in the front yard. And as we've indicated, and I think as the board acknowledged, uh, this is a significant improvement. Um, and that was also acknowledged by the Conservation Commission and the Engineering Department in their referral to the engineer, uh, Conservation Commission. Uh, the staff report that was issued prior to the last hearing, uh, contained some references to two forty sixty nine D. That section of the bylaw relates to, uh, lot. Lot coverage by structures, paving and parking in excess of the amount that would be allowed, so in this case seventy percent. But that doesn't apply to this application. We are conforming to lot coverage requirements and in fact have reduced it by twelve percent, which is just shy of twelve thousand square feet. Again, this application is only relative to the parking in the front yard, which which exists now will be be made like much better by this, uh, by this process. The comments included in the staff report were exerted from an email to the Conservation Commission on February eighteenth. Uh, and those comments were pertaining to the notice of intent that was before the Conservation Commission at that time. Um, since then, the plans were modified to reduce that lot coverage by structured paving and parking. And those plans in front of conservation also included construction details that aren't necessarily pertinent to the special permit application for the parking in the front yard. The items that were mentioned in the email, uh, from the engineering department, which a copy of which was included in our correspondence. Were addressed and those suggestions were incorporated into the plans. Uh, an order of conditions has been issued by the Conservation Commission. And lastly, the staff report summarized with recommendations. Um, which included item E referring to adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Uh, that the board review engineering and conservation referrals to ensure stormwater is being managed properly. Uh, we agree that stormwater should of course be managed properly on site. But there were no referrals from engineering or Conservation Commission to the planning board relative to this application. Um, and those stormwater concerns were addressed within the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, which we think should be adequate. Um, proposed drainage system is is a very significant improvement over the system that exists today. Uh, this application, uh, would would result in a removal of two very large buildings from the site. That are both nonconforming and in disrepair, replacing it with a single building. Uh, it would eliminate all the existing nonconforming setbacks as well as the existing nonconforming lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. Would respectfully, uh, suggest that this project is a major improvement, uh, to the existing conditions, is an improvement to the area. And we think that the board has the necessary information to proceed. Uh, that said, would of course be happy to, uh, address any questions and we hope that we've been able to resolve any confusion that might have come up.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, Jim. You gotta click on. Your microphone, Jim.
Same comment as before. This is a public meeting and we are not showing any plans or anything, so the public doesn't know what we're talking about.
I would be happy to, uh, share my screen if there's any, I'd be happy to bring it up right now, Mr. Fox.
I have it as well if, if, uh, I can share my screen just a moment.
I'm familiar with it. I just think the public has the right to see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I.
Thank you, Kevin.
So that is. Uh, that is the proposed conditions plan and that's the landscape plan, which I think is a really good reflection of the proposed conditions. Um, but I also think it's really instructive to look at the existing conditions plan. Um, which which perhaps gives a slightly better idea of what is there today. Of course it does, it's the existing conditions opposed to proposed. But you'll see it's, it's right now, it's a congested site. It is, um, as we've said, the parking is poorly defined. Kind of come as you may in terms of parking. And and you have these buildings which I think have been a number of buildings over the years that have kind of merged into two large, uh, two larger buildings. And as I've said, they're in very significant disrepair. But what's being proposed is is a much more condensed site with a condensed building and well-defined parking. And and I think nicer, uh, greenery and landscaping as well as an improved bulkhead and drainage system.
Okay. Does the board have any comments in regard to the plan? That Mr. Clower showed. Yes, Paul?
Yeah. I'm looking at the site plan layout prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. And, uh. As mentioned, the building is from a high point and it does drain down to Charles River. And I'd appreciate if Mr. Costa could talk a little more in detail about the effort to protect against sea level rise and the docking area on the low level river. That's going to be an important element in this project, but future projects as well. So I'd appreciate your input at this time, if you will.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you for the record, uh, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering. Um, you can hear me all, correct?
Yes.
Um. That's a great question and yes, we we were considering that carefully. As the site exists today, uh, the sea level rise is apparent. Um, it's been creeping up over time. Uh, areas that were getting, uh, that were never inundated before are getting inundated on a regular basis. So when we rebuild the entire shoreline essentially. We're going to be raising the level of the bulkhead and the level of the ground behind it. And we're going to be sloping the site such that. It it diverts the runoff away from the water, uh, into a drainage swale. Uh, on the, I believe that's the northeast side of the property. Um, so as what's happening today is a lot of the water is running right down to the bulkhead. Uh, and running either through it, uh, or over it and directly into the water with no pre-treatment. So we're going to be raising, um, that. Uh, area along the shoreline, raising the bulkhead, raising the ground behind it. Um, elevating the parking lot and then redirecting the drainage. Um, away from the water so that it goes through a drainage swale for pre-treatment. Um, we're, we're raising things a few feet, um, in the lowest point. So we feel that, uh. These structures on site will all be adequately protected for the foreseeable future. And where we've situated the building is actually a little further up slope. So if there was a significant storm event or there was sea level rise occurring, uh, much. In a much more rapid pace than was ever anticipated. Uh, what would first start to happen would be that the parking lot would get inundated. Uh, but the building and the septic system and those structures would be protected. Uh, which in turn would protect the adjacent resource areas. So, um, without, uh, compromising too much the functionality of the site. Uh, we did design, uh, and incorporate, um, some measures to protect against sea level rise.
Does the board, yes, Charlotte? Click your microphone, Charlotte. Charlotte.
Yeah, reiterate what was said at the last meeting is still true. They've come asking for. Uh, the one way that it would be out of compliance is the parking at the front. It's been pointed out that the parking is already at the front. And that we didn't have a problem with it and to say again that this is a terrific improvement in landscaping. In the aesthetics of the building and in the improvement in the parking. Overall, uh, a favorite to the town.
Okay, is there any, yes, Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Costa, I have just one question. Uh, you mentioned you're going to raise the bulkheads. To what elevation or how much are you raising it? What's the order magnitude?
Um, it's a, it's a battery, it varies, Paul, because the, uh, Mr. Dryer, because the the bulkhead's deteriorating now. So a lot of it is is lower in some areas or there's differences in height. Um, on average, you figure about a foot and a half to two feet. As you run across the front of it.
Okay.
But the projections for sea level rise are higher than that, as you well know.
Well, I guess that that would depend on the time scale, uh, but. Um, yeah, we're all trying to figure out what that, what that rate of rise is going to be. But that's why we situated the building a little further upland.
Very happy to see you addressing.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, Michaela, have there been any comments that have come in?
Uh, no, there were none before and there are none in the chat currently.
Okay, thank you. Now, when we did this before, we had continued. The hearing to July twenty eighth, so I would need a motion to continue. The move, uh, excuse me, to July fourteenth. I'm sorry, I misspoke. So I would need a motion for a continuance to July fourteenth.
Um, Ms. Curf, if I, if I. If I may, real quick, um, it seems that the board is is inclined to, um, proceed, I think. Uh, with this application and we feel that they should. Would it be possible, uh, that we could have a decision drafted prior to the fourteenth?
I would have to ask Michaela about that.
Um, I know there was some new information that was received. Um. We have not had engineering, um, take a look at some of that new information, so I I don't know that a decision would be able to be drafted.
I can, I can actually say that the only information that was submitted was the the letter, um, which we sought to clarify the comments in the planning, uh, in the staff report. Uh, so I don't think there's any new information that that engineering hasn't seen.
Yes, absolutely. Um. There is references to that, to engineering approving things from conservation and them, um. Just, you know, putting kind of saying things that they said, um, through conservation, which I'm sure is the case. I would just need to confirm with them. Um, before I could stand in front of a meeting and say that, you know, that they said those things.
Yeah, and that's why we, yeah, I understand completely and that's why we included the, um, the, a copy of the email as well, just so it's there.
So that is the answer to your question. No. Probably not, but so again, I would need a motion to continue this hearing to July fourteenth.
Move.
Is there a second?
No, I, I just have a question.
Oh, yes, Bob.
Why do we need to continue? What are we going to do at the next meeting?
That's exactly my question.
I don't know because you see, this is where, this is a replication of the last meeting, Bob, and at the last meeting on June ninth. The motion had been made to continue to July fourteenth.
I think that was due to largely the fact that there, it was thought that there was additional information needing to be submitted. But our position is that we've had, we have submitted a complete application. Um, and together with the complete application in the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. Um, we respectfully, um, suggest the board has what they need to close the hearing.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I don't know what we'd be talking about at the next meeting.
Bob, I don't either because. I think we continued it to get all the information in. Charlotte, yes?
Isn't it possible for Michaela to, uh, find, to confirm that yes, it's okay to draft the approval and if so, that's what we would be looking at?
We could have a draft. That doesn't mean we would have to vote positively on it. It means we could, much like Mr. Betzick tonight. Paul?
My understanding is the purpose of this, uh. Public hearing is to address the parking issue. We have addressed the parking issues.
I believe so.
No concerns on the parking issues that I've heard. So I don't see why we couldn't move forward on. Uh, in light of everything else that's going on nowadays. I I don't prepare it, so I don't know how long it's going to take in the, the office. It would appear to me that we're dealing basically with a special permit for parking. And those issues have been addressed.
That's why I was deferring to Michaela because I don't know what their schedule is. Michaela?
If the board's comfortable and they would like to have a draft decision written for the board to make the choice to act on on the fourteenth. I'm more than happy to draft that up and then if you guys feel as though you have the information and want to act on it, you're welcome to, obviously.
I think this is how the board is leaning right now, Michaela. And but we would still need, as Charlotte has moved, to continue this to July fourteenth to render that approval even. So.
Well, should.
But.
I could make a motion. Uh, that, uh, to vote in favor of a special permit. That would then, uh, have the draft decision written for the fourteenth. Is that what we're?
No, we don't, we don't ever vote that way, Bob. We, uh, because then we voted it and we don't have the decision in front of us. So we would need the decision in front of us to vote on, but it appears that the board is in favor of a positive. Motion, an approval motion. To be put together by Michaela that we will then take up on the fourteenth and vote.
So we need to close this hearing?
We need to close this hearing. Well.
We have to vote, we have to vote for or against continuing the hearing or close.
Jim?
I believe this is a special permit, not a hearing.
It's a special permit.
It's a special.
And I just suggested the staff.
Get a, a decision ready to vote as soon as possible.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, we would continue, we could close it. And then accept no more information in.
Yeah.
That's what closing it means. We're, we're satisfied that we have all of the information. That we need. If everybody on the board is satisfied that there is no more information that they are looking for, then we can close the hearing.
You can also, you can keep the hearing open.
Right.
We can write up a draft decision on the fourteenth. You guys can accept any new information that is presented. Um, if we have any clarifications, um, we can absolutely present that and then you guys can still act on the decision on the fourteen.
Just as we did with Mr. Betzick.
Correct, exactly.
We could vote on the decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you can close the hearing and vote on the decision that that same meeting.
Correct.
I just want us to keep dragging out. I mean, we have enough things on our agenda to.
Yeah.
To, to close some things out and and move on, so.
Yeah, that's not the point to drag it out. Without Tom here, he may have other information that Michaela is not aware of. I don't think so, but I don't know. And.
So I think Michaela's suggestion is the way we should go.
Right.
I agree.
So Charlotte has moved that we continue the hearing to July fourteen. And I would need, still need a second on that.
I had actually made the original motion and then Charlotte seconded.
Sorry.
Do I need to withdraw?
No.
Need to withdraw that?
No, the motion that you made is to continue to July fourteen.
Right.
And then Charlotte seconded it. Okay, so all in favor of the continuation of this until July fourteenth with the idea that we will close it. And vote it. All seven of us have voted, uh, positively on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate your time.
As you can appreciate, I'm sure this is a little convoluted right now.
We're all, we're all just trying to figure this thing out.
I know. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so you guys have to disappear now. Thomas still has to get you out of the room. Thomas, yes, thank you.
He's done.
Okay.
Take him out.
We move on the agenda now to Woods Hole Partners LLC definitive plan notification to create a four lot subdivision. With four hundred forty five linear foot roadway located at five thirty three dash five thirty nine. Woods Hole Road, Cape and Islands Engineering. Paul, would you read the notifications, please?
Notification of the Wood Hole Partners definitive plan application was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on June twelfth and June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Madam Chairman, Jim Fox, I'm recusing myself from this meeting.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, and so for the applicant, we have Mr. Bob Amant here. Uh, Bob, you have to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Um, I'm Bob.
Thank you, Pat. Um, I'm Bob Amant. I'm attorney for Woods Hole Partners LLC, which owns the 5.4 acre parcel that's, uh, in question here on Woods Hole Road. Um, normally I would try to remember what I said at a last meeting and not say it. And now I want to try to remember all the things I said at the last meeting because we are doing this, uh, this over again. I'd like to note that Matt Costa is the engineer. He was here a moment ago, but I think he should be, uh, elevated because he may have some things to, to say.
Thank you. He should be re-elevated, Bob.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Matt.
Hi, Matt.
So the, uh, purpose of this subdivision plan, um, is to, uh, freeze the zoning as allowed by Massachusetts general laws before the November town.
Okay, Bob is frozen up.
How am I doing now?
I, I can hear. I'm fine.
I couldn't hear. You, you froze, Bob. There were a few people who froze.
Well, let's, uh, let's keep going and see how we do.
Okay.
Um, Massachusetts general laws, the zoning statute, um, gives some protection to a developer who's in the process of developing a piece of property to protect the developer from zoning changes that, um, might be proposed to stop a development, uh, to, to prevent changes to the zoning that are being, have been relied upon in obtaining permits, uh, as is the case here. So last November, uh, the planning board recommended and town meeting ended up passing a zoning bylaw that changed the height requirement, um, the height limit in the business redevelopment district. Um, instead of allowing three-story buildings, the bylaw was changed to allow only two and a half story buildings up to 35 feet in height. And, um, we were of course aware of that before town meeting. We had already obtained, uh, approvals of, of three-story buildings for the proposed 43-unit, um, condominium in Woods Hole, in seven buildings, 43 units. Um, and in order to protect the developer, we filed a, um, a preliminary subdivision plan. I'd point out that although we had already received permits from the Cape Cod Commission and the planning board had approved site plan review and we had a, uh, decision, I believe by then from the, uh, zoning board of appeals. Also, we've been through, uh, we had not yet been into the historical commission, but we subsequently did go to the historical commission and obtain their approval. Um, but the Board of Appeals decision was appealed by Inabutter. That appeal is pending in the, uh, courts. Um, the process has been delayed because of the COVID emergency, but, uh, um, probably will be underway again soon. Um, but in order to prevent against, uh, the application of the zoning, uh, change, uh, we filed the plan, a preliminary plan. And the preliminary subdivision plan was voted approved by the, uh, planning board. Uh, certain waivers were requested and the board approved, uh, the three waivers we requested, um, at the time. Now, I should point out that, uh, uh, zoning freeze applies to, um, to any changes to the zoning bylaw, not just what occurred, uh, at the November town meeting, but any that may occur in the future, uh, during the period of protection. And the period of protection runs for eight years from the time that the, uh, subdivision plan that we filed is endorsed. There is no requirement, and the case law is clear on this, uh, that there be any intention to, um, develop the property pursuant to that subdivision plan. It seems like, uh, a rather awkward provision in the zoning bylaw to, um, make a developer go through the subdivision process rather than just give some kind of notice that, um, would freeze the zoning. But the requirement is that if you file a preliminary plan prior to the town meeting, it freezes the zoning and as long as you then file a definitive plan within seven months after the filing of the preliminary plan, then the zoning is frozen, uh, throughout the period of the deliberation on the definitive plan, including any, um, period of appeal and including the time involved in submitting a plan that would perhaps be required to, um, make changes, uh, that the planning board, um, required. Uh, and then from the final date of endorsement, the protection, uh, continues for, uh, eight years. So we are in litigation with regard to the proposed 43-unit development, which is what we want to, um, how we intend to develop the property. Um, but, um, the zoning freeze is important to us because there are any number of circumstances that could, um, bring that height limit, uh, into play if there were changes proposed to the already approved project. Um, or if it's not expected, but if some other development were to occur on the property, uh, the ability to construct a three-story building or buildings would be important. In response to our filing, the engineering department, um, had a bunch of, um, comments, several pages of comments that were, have previously been discussed. And the plans have been revised and, uh, resubmitted by Matt Costa, um, in response to the engineering department. Um, Matt submitted those on June 11th along with, uh, correspondence to the board that, uh, described changes to the plan and how they addressed the issues raised by the engineering department. We did realize, uh, in the course of that, that, uh, uh, three more waivers, uh, should be requested in addition to the three that we previously, um, mentioned. And, um, I think that I'll suggest that Matt tell you what those waivers are. If you're up for that, Matt. And, um, the primary one, the most important, I think, is that we're proposing to put the subdivision road that would serve three of the lots. The fourth lot has all of its frontage on Woods Hole Road and would be served by an existing, uh, curb cut on the property. But this is in the location of a different curb cut that already exists. Those curb cuts have, uh, over the years been sufficient for what was a 56-unit motel and 170-seat restaurant. And those are the curb cuts for the 43 kind, uh, unit condominium development that's, um, already received, um, all the local approvals, as I said. Um, now that curb cut location, which we're proposing, is, um, about 200 feet from the center line of Church Street. The, um, zoning by, uh, does the subdivision rules and regulations call for a 300-foot offset? We could meet that offset, um, with some room to spare if we use the other driveway on the property. But this is a better location in terms of preserving, um, the landscape and, um, using the existing grades without excessive cuts and fills, which is, um, specified as a goal of the subdivision rules and regulations. So I think that's the most important of the waivers that we're requesting. There are other waivers that really relate to the existing topography, such as the side slopes. Um, it's just what we have to work with. Now, this is a street that it's extremely unlikely that it's ever actually going to be built. Um, I understand, as, uh, the town planner has pointed out to the board, that we still have to go through the process still and the, uh, engineering requirements are, are still applicable. Um, and we've, uh, presented our plans with, with that in mind. And also because, um, of the unlikelihood that this road will ever be built, the cost of meeting the requirements is not our, is not our concern. Um, so where we can, um, satisfy the requirements of, uh, rules and regulations, we've, uh, we've complied. Um, but the fact is there are existing grades, like the steep slope below the, the historic dome that's on the property, and we don't want to cut into, in, into that. That's one of the, the other waivers, um, related to the, um, profile of the road. Matt, do you want to talk about waivers?
Go ahead, Matt.
Sure. Um, for the record, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering. Uh, in my letter, I, um, referenced three additional waivers. Uh, the first one is really, uh, it's a group. It's 305 under subdivision control, uh, 305-24-30 and-40. They all relate to the, uh, road cross-section details that the town has, which is a standard generic detail. Typically, in, in the past, uh, not that there's been a lot of subdivisions in recent years, but, um, that was, this wasn't one that was ever requested. Usually we could just adapt to this, these site constraints. Uh, but due to the existing site conditions, uh, we are not, um, matching that profile. So we are requesting, uh, a waiver from that. Um, and that's because of largely the slope around the cul-de-sac. Um, number two is, uh, 305-24F. Now that is, um, having to do with drainage calculations, uh, including maximum potential development. Um, so as you're familiar with the site, there is a 43 unit multifamily project permitted, including, uh, a dome, a dome structure, uh, which would give you a really good indication of what maximum development would be. Uh, for us to prepare arbitrary scenarios to run calculations on would not be a good use of, uh, time for the applicant, nor for the town to review those, uh, calculations because they would be arbitrary. Um, in this particular instance, we have a very good example of a project that's already been vetted and went through the, the process and that being the multifamily project. So we suggested that would be, uh, a, a good indication of what potential development would be. And we're respectfully requesting a waiver, uh, under the section 305-24F3, uh, from having to do any more, uh, calculations for potential development. Um, third is, uh, side slopes and cross-sections greater than three to one. This is very similar to, uh, the previous, uh, waiver and number one. Um, and this has to do with, uh, the slopes again on, on the side of the road. Um, you see, it, when we go through these subdivision control regulations, it gets repetitive. And when I was writing my letter, I was trying to not be too repetitive for you. Um, so when we're not adhering to the, your normal road cross-section, it triggers some of these waivers. Um, when we're using the existing site contours and features as existing roadway, driveways that's there now, we're minimizing cuts and fills is which, is which, uh, is what subdivision control law, um, tries to encourage you to do. Um, and we're utilizing, uh, and trying to, um, retain the existing vegetation on the site. Um, so, uh, we think that we meet the spirit of, um, those subdivision control laws, but we, we do need to request, uh, relief under these, uh, three sections that I cited in my letter. Um, I'm not going to run through the rest of it. I guess if you have any questions about it or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, that seems appropriate at this time. Bob, were you saying something?
Well, I was going to add that, um, while Matt has asked that there be a waiver at this time of the requirement of, uh, having additional drainage, uh, review for scenarios of maximum development that would be speculative. Um, we would expect and have no objection to a condition, uh, in your decision that would require, uh, such analysis of drainage, uh, and review by the engineering department prior to actual construction of, um, of the road and use of those, uh, of the lots as shown on the, on the plan.
That seems logical. I have to let everybody know that I keep getting a message across here occasionally. Your internet connection is unstable. So when I said you froze up, hang on. It's my internet connection, just in case. I need to let you know this. Um.
You froze.
Okay, you froze up again.
Now you're back.
Okay. There's nothing I can do except call Comcast and yell at them tomorrow. So, um, it seems appropriate right now that I asked the board whether they have any follow-up questions to Bob's and Matt's presentation tonight. Okay, and not hearing any questions. We had at the June 9th meeting continued to July 28th. And I believe that's probably appropriate at this point that I have a motion to continue to June 28th on this issue. Pam?
I'm sorry. Say it again, Pat?
Okay.
Yes, I'm so moved. They continue to the 28th.
Second.
Pam has moved and Bob has seconded that we continue this hearing to July 28th on our Zoom meeting at that point. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand, please. Uh, Charlotte, are you in favor?
I think Paul has a question.
Paul has a question.
I'm sorry. Paul?
Are the people in the chat room, they're gonna get involved before we vote on this?
I haven't seen anybody come into that. And this is a continuing, there are none, right?
There are none. There is no chats and there's no one in the waiting room, um, that I can see for this particular item.
Mm-hmm. I was kind of paying attention to that. So, okay, so all in favor. Uh, Bob?
Well, I, I, I'm concerned that, uh, the, uh, board be fair to everybody who's interested in this matter. And I guess I'd point out that, uh, there was a, a correspondence sent to the board just prior to the previous meeting from Inabutter, who really was asking some questions. Um, asking what the zoning is. And of course, we know what that is and suggesting that, uh, we were creating single-family residential lots, which, um, for, is a use that's not provided for in the business redevelopment district. Uh, we've never said that, uh, the conceptual lots would be used for any purpose other than what's allowed in the, um, business redevelopment, uh, district. And there are quite a number of uses which could be made of the properties, including, you know, different nonprofit, um, uses. So I just, uh, there were questions raised and I wouldn't want the board to, um, to close the hearing without recognizing that because I don't want it to be an issue that's raised, um, by Inabutter later.
Okay, so you've brought that forward, Bob.
And I think I've, and I think I've, uh, substanti- substantially, um, re, uh, given a reply to the issues that were.
Okay. So, um, Pam has disappeared. Are you back, Pam? Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Amant, there was a comment made by the same, uh, butter about, uh, hailing this issue until the court challenge is resolved. Uh, that seems to be very difficult to anticipate.
Uh, this, this is a completely separate matter. Um, one could imagine that because of the, um, litigation, which can go on for many months, uh, even years, though we hope not, uh, that it would delay the project that's already been permitted. And we might want to do something else with the property. There, there's absolutely no reason whatsoever to, uh, to link the two. Frankly, the, the, the applicant has a right to do what we're doing, uh, which is simply the convoluted way in which one freezes the zoning. And, um, so we've submitted a subdivision plan that, um, we think under all normal circumstances, uh, you would approve.
I just wanted to get you to address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. Pam has well and truly disappeared, it looks like. It has been moved and seconded that we continue this definitive plan to July 28th at our Zoom meeting. And all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, that's five out of the six that are currently present, one of whom is uh recused. Okay, thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
And we'll see you on the twenty eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Okay, next on our agenda, public discussion, applicant Jeffrey Bright, site plan review application for a detached accessory apartment located at thirty-two Walker Street, Warwick and Associates, and is Mr. Bright present, Michaela, or not?
Um, yep, he is, I believe he is being brought up right now, there he is.
Okay.
Believe a few other people that seem to be.
Okay, Henry Ayers, I believe he's the owner of the property, if I'm recalling.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, hello.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good.
Uh, for the record, Jeffrey Bright, here representing Henry Ayers at thirty-two Walker Street. Uh, when we last left off, we left off on a continuance to July fourteenth.
Correct.
To go back to the drawing board, so to speak, for um a couple of planned deficiencies, and also the overall arrangement of the application for the proposed renovation of the structure. Also.
I'm going to interrupt you momentarily, Mr. Bright, because I, I think you realize, but I'm not sure, and I want to make it clear, that because uh the password was not removed until fifteen minutes in, we have been asked to redo the whole meeting.
Right.
This is a redo of that meeting, okay.
Uh, so in.
Um, Mr. Ayers is present, and he's requesting to be included, I thought he was being included.
He is.
He just needs.
He's probably just working his way into video and so forth.
Okay, well, you might want to wait just a mo- ah, there he is, okay, so now we're all present here.
He needs his audio.
Yes, you need to click that out.
There he is.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, all right, continue, please, Mr. Bright.
Yes, so again, for the record, Jeffrey Bright, Synergy Home Improvements, representing Henry Ayers, who was also present at thirty-two Walker Street, uh the application for site plan review to renovate the existing garage and rental units um on the left side of the lot. Asking the plant board for permission to do so. As a result of the previous meeting, um I am actually in process in, in, you know, forward preparation for the July fourteenth meeting, uh having some septic analysis done. Uh, but I'm still looking for some results on that, as well as having to update my planned work as the documents that you already have.
Okay. Um, does anybody on the board have any questions of Mr. Bright? Jim?
I would just like to on his plan to have him identify the, the structures that are non-conforming, there's, which there are several.
Okay. And I know I expressed a lot of concern of insufficient parking.
Yes, so that's, yeah, that's one of the things that I went back to the drawing board with my associate at Warwick's, as far as regenerating the plot plan to be more descriptive. And also um what alterations we need to make as far as lot coverage. So I'm, I'm still waiting to hear back from him.
Okay, because I also had a lot of concern about it's on a septic system, and if that system fails, there is no sewage connection right there. So you have no recourse for it.
Correct, in fact, I, that was one of the takeaways from the previous meeting. Uh, I, I talked to my septic associate, John Gracie, and he was, uh, he's in the process of developing a Title V report, and also looking into, um, I know you had mentioned the idea of relocating, the need to possibly relocate the septic, or um I'm, I requested that he provide, you know, a budget analysis for actually connecting to the sewer as a possible countermeasure for that, so, but again, I'm still waiting on that information.
Good luck.
Okay, so what, so what we're you're moving ahead towards the July fourteenth date at this point um with answering our concerns, hopefully.
Correct.
Answering our concerns that we brought up at this meeting, a replay of this meeting on the June ninth date.
Right.
Okay, does anybody else on the board wish to weigh in on this? Paul? You have to unmute, Paul, you're muted.
All right, uh, there was some um discussion previously about the status of the garage and the attached cottage in relation to the new uh accessory apartment. And there seems to be some confusion on those three, would you please clarify that?
Um, so the, well, I mean, as far as, as far as what confusion, I mean, the, the old, the, the alteration that's being requested um is within the existing building footprint. Basically, the uh ha- habitable spaces would be expanding, and the garage section would be reduced to more of the storage area. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Well, it would appear there'd be five bedrooms if all were built out. And obviously, that's not the case, but there's some confusion, and there was some discussion about changing the arrangement of the cottage or the garage, or doing something a little bit different.
Oh, right.
There was some confusion in my mind in that, if you can clarify.
Yeah, there, well, there's this, uh, there's this other accessory building in the back center of the lot um that, again, is also existing, which had nothing to do with, you know, the, the specific renovation at hand that we were looking to achieve. So I, uh, I actually discussed that with, with Henry, um, and, you know, provided the link for him to come along and, you know, be a part of the meeting if he had any questions uh as far as um the intent and use, or lack thereof, of that structure.
That, that structure is presently being used as a shed. It's never been rented, uh, and it's basically empty, except for some storage items. Yes, Mr. Fox?
Site plan we show calls it a ga- a guest cottage, that's what's been submitted.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they kind of misnamed it.
That's important.
Yeah, we've got to get these labeled appropriately so we can look at it correctly.
Ag- agreed, that's one of the things that had to be edited at Warwick's.
Okay, John?
For the television audience, could we show the site plan?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'll bring it up right now. Give me just one moment, sorry. Is everyone able to see that?
Hmm, not quite. There you go.
Okay, there.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Michaela, it probably would help if you pointed out where the, it says existing guest house, or?
Yes.
Okay, then the main house, the main dwelling. Okay, and then the garage with attached cottage.
So this is the garage that I'm kind of circling with my mouse currently, and then this is the attached cottage that the applicant is requesting for the accessory dwelling unit that's before you guys right now.
And our concern was that they were right on the property line, as people can see, they back right up to the parking line, uh, the property line.
Correct.
Um, we have an existing paved driveway that shows two vehicles, one back behind the other. And I know when I went out there, it looked like it was pretty tight to me to have the two cars side by side, and anyway, it's problematic.
Um, Mrs. uh Perflett?
Yes.
Would it, would it be helpful to present to the board a, a photograph of an occupied driveway with vehicles?
I think it probably would, yes.
I know that, maybe, maybe that's customary, or perhaps not, but I'd be happy to do that, because it actually is a pretty spacious driveway. Um, in fact, that was when I originally, when I originally stepped on this property and met Mr. Ayers, that, you know, the, the one thing that jumped out at me was not the size of the driveway, um, but rather, of course, the coverage. Um, but yeah, I would be, I would be happy to do that, because there is, there is really, uh, it, it almost it's tough, I, I, I should drew, probably had Dan draw something that actually looks like a car to scale, because it, it is definitely a um sizable driveway.
But the requirement would be for three vehicles.
Correct.
Chairwoman, we, we have space for six.
You do?
Three, three in a row, two side by side.
Okay.
That's why I, that's why I suggested an actual photograph of this.
It would be helpful, I think, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would be happy to do that, for sure, yeah.
Okay. And the other concern, of course, was where the leaching area is and the septic system, because if you had to replace it.
Right.
Would make life very difficult, I'm afraid.
Right, um. Well, I mean.
There's nothing we can do about it, I mean, it is, it is what it is.
I know. But you have, you have to answer those questions.
Yeah, I've, I've been here twenty years, and we have not had a septic problem.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'm interested to, I am interested to hear, you know, and I'm, you know, o- o- optimistic, I have no reason to believe why it wouldn't, why I wouldn't get a pass on a Title V inspection, and uh, but overall consultation, in fact, in fact, from the inspector as well, I also reached out to Jack Polly, because I, my concern was that um in the event that uh, you know, that was something that may need to be done in the future, at least, at least a basic preliminary design for another system, but you know, the, the, the health department report on that system and, and the plans that that, that I got from Town Hall, I mean, it, I have no reason to believe that it's I guess, what I'm saying is, I can, I can, I can look at a, a schematic of a, of a septic system and its age, and of course, an inspection, what the inspector actually feels about it, and tell whether or not something's got a long way to go or not. And there was nothing about it that told me um we'd be staring, I've got problems staring in the face, I mean, um, everything's, everything about distribution box and so forth, um, you know, was in line with the report, and it made, it made sense, and it looked, and in fact, it looked a lot like what new system designs look like. Um, so, you know, so I was um like, sort of surprised at that. Uh, but it, it is, its location is, is on the lot itself is somewhat unusual. Um, so uh, but given that, given its location, I felt that a countermeasure of dealing with um that situation would have possibly been hooking, hooking it up to the sewer. Um, but I, I'm waiting to hear back from the civil engineer.
Okay, great, thank you. Bob, you had a question, I think?
Yeah, I, I know we've already uh rehashed this at Groundhog Day and all that, but the reason we continued it to the fourteenth was so the applicant could get all this information
Right.
to us, so I don't see any reason why we need to keep asking the same questions and covering the same information if he hasn't had it yet, and his assignment was to have it for the fourteen.
Right, and Jim?
Heard new testimony tonight that I would like to just get clarified. I heard the, what is labeled on the plan as existing garage is described as storage space instead of garage, because I noticed the dimensions on it may not make it a garage, so I just I'd like to make sure that they're clear on that, is that going to be a garage? And does it, or, and is it fit garage codes, or is it storage space?
No, the, the proposed reconstruction would reduce it to too small for an actual park.
That's what I thought, but, but the plan shows it as garage.
Correct.
So you need to clear that out, too.
That's a plan of what's existing now.
Right.
Oh, I think the proposed plan was that, too, that's what we saw.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we saw, you're right, Jim.
No, that's what we saw, I mean, yeah, it's existing, but I've heard it described as a park, as a garage, but then also talked about storage, I just want it to be one or the other, not both.
No, right, uh, understood, message received, yes, that needs to be, that needs to be clarified as a, as a proposed on the plot plan.
Because, because we have a problem with the parking, and you can kind of say, well, we could put them in the garage, but it's not a garage, it's a storage space. It's got to be one or the other.
Gotcha, understood.
Pam?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, I, my battery died, so I just hooked in, my daughter hooked me up with her laptop. Um, but my concern is, there's a guest house and a garage that isn't really a garage, and an accessory apartment. And I, I guess, to me, this is looking like a subdivision now with various buildings and various uses of the buildings, and I'm a little confused, it just, it looks very odd to me. I haven't seen an accessory apartment application come in uh that has looked anything like this.
Yes, I, I would agree that the, the plot at present is certainly unique. But uh, speaking to, I believe, Mr., it was Mr. Fox's point that he's making, um, there is some structure labeling that needs to be clarified. Because uh, speaking to uh Henry's point, uh, this is pointed out as an existing guest house, this um building in the back center, and it's not used for that purpose at all, it's more like store.
So, we need to have proper labeling for what really is going on.
I mean, my-
Obvious.
My concern is, if the guest house could be used as a guest house, then you don't need the accessory apartment, it would seem to me. I mean, because it would seem very odd to me to have a guest house, a main house, an accessory apartment to garage um that isn't a garage, so I, I just need some clarification on that.
Well, I suppose verbally, ma'am, I would say that the uh cottage that's attached to the garage existing would be expanded, um, and it's uh about six hundred and twenty-eight feet, I believe it is, if I'm making it here, yes, six hundred and twenty-eight square feet.
A new unit.
Which is, you know, um, you know, certainly usable uh as a, as a rental unit. A, a, a two hundred or less, maybe a slightly less than two hundred square foot, basically shed. Um, it is, is not really designed for an intent, intent for rental unit. Um, so, uh, you know, speak, again, speaking to the um point of, you know, some more clearer labeling on the plot plan would, would, would make this uh, you know, more clear.
So that guest house is not going to be used for a guest house?
Correct.
No.
Never.
Charlotte?
I, I think, um, Pam, some of this was covered while your battery was giving you a problem.
Yeah.
We seem to be going round and round, the point has been made, he's coming back with changes for the fourteenth, and we look forward to seeing them.
Right.
I think we'll.
And Paul?
I don't want to keep belaboring this point, you've been very accommodating up till now, and I'm sure you're going to continue. The, the, and you've indicated you're waiting for some information from Warwick Engineering, and they could clear up most of this by just in the plan, so it's not a big deal. The question I have is, you were talking about the health department said the capacity of the sewer system is fine, but the notes in the drawing say there is no information. You may want to double-check the health department, because my experience is they do have some very, very good records. My own house, I had a something there that was over a hundred years old, and they had all that information at that time, until I replaced it. But they might have some information, you were talking about, they said it's okay, but how do they say it's okay if there's no information? So I think if just having addressed that, I think that would solve some of the problems, they might even have the location of it.
Sure, I'm actually, I, I, I am actually going by the staff report, health department note. Sure, I'm actually, I, I am actually going by the staff report, health department notes. Just that clar, summarized the plans that they, that they have on file. And I retrieved that system detailed plan. I don't recall, I don't recall the engineer that did it. But I acquired that document from, from the health department. They emailed me a copy of the septic plan. That, I'm just going by that information and so, to it today. And until I hear from Mr. Gracie with the Title V inspection and his thoughts on it, you know, and also Jack as well, you know, I'm just more or less speculating and going by what you have on record at the town.
Okay, Paul?
As I said, we're not trying to label the point. We've already agreed to extend this to July 14th.
Right.
And I think you're going to address all those issues at that time. That would be fine for my perspective.
Bob?
Just a quick clarification. It was stated earlier that what is labeled on the plans as guest house is actually a shed. And I want to know, is there any plumbing to that shed at this point?
There is, there is a, a plumbing to it, but it has burst over 10 years ago and has never been replaced.
So was, was there a toilet and a sink and all that in it?
There is one toilet and a shower.
Okay. So still not classified as a shed then, so it still could be called a guest house? If it has, if it has plumbing in it, then it's not a shed.
Okay, can we go to the public? Has there been anything? I see there are a few more chats in there, Michaela. Is there anything?
No, we have, there was one attendee who had their raised hand, so Thomas Cox from IT reached out and we received no chat. And actually, the attendee has dropped off and they're not even present in the meeting anymore. So no correspondence.
Okay, so no correspondence. So we will continue this then until July 14th. And for the site plan review, I don't need a motion. It's just going to be continued to July 14th at our Zoom meeting. So hopefully you will have the answers that we're looking for July 14th.
Yes.
Thank you both for coming tonight. I appreciate all the additional information you've given us tonight.
And thank you to the members of the board.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, so next, planning board discussion, report on May 14th ZBA meeting regarding Sunrise Estate Bonus Lot/ Shamsey request. And Michaela, I think, was just going to read it from the minutes as to what Tom reported.
Yes, I had it up and then I apologized while I was looking for another document. It got closed. So if you give me just one moment, I will grab that for you. Okay, so the report. Scroll to it. All right, the applicant's attorney questioned an open meeting law violation because she had not seen a confidential memo from town council on legal advice. The chairman of the ZBA opted to continue to a future meeting. The advice of town council is not a public document and not to be shared with the applicant. However, the ZBA did vote to release that information to the applicant and they are scheduled to come back before the ZBA on June 25th.
Thank you, Michaela. Union Studios is next on the agenda, meeting schedule and process during COVID-19. And Tom did not have any further information on that at this point, and as you see, he's not here tonight being under the weather. Bad Martha Administrative Approval Request. We were asked to remove that at their request because they were applying for outdoor seating, which they, by the way, have gotten. So we have planning board reorganization. Nominations.
I have a question.
Yes, Charlotte?
Are we duty bound to repeat what we did before?
No, we are not. This is in essence, a new meeting.
I'll nominate Pat for chair.
A lot of people are muted. Paul, you're muted. Pam, you're muted. Bob has nominated me for chair.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been nomination and second. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and John dropped out momentarily, so there are six of us present, so six. Vice Chair. Nomination for Vice Chair.
Nominate Charlotte.
Is there a second?
Second.
Charlotte has been nominated in second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So six, out of six present. And Clerk Secretary.
I'll nominate Paul.
Second.
Any other nominations? Paul has been nominated in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Six out of six, so we continue with the same board that we currently have, the same, yeah, superstructure, whatever you call us. Thank you all. Future agendas for pending applications. Melinda is putting that together because a lot of them are going to be what we were saying tonight with the continuations to the 14th and the 28th. So she's been gathering that together and there will be other things and I'm pretty sure she will send that on to people. Beyond what we've continued for tonight, I really don't know. Do you have any idea if there are others at this point, Michaela? Other items?
I honestly don't at this point.
Okay, John, you missed the vote. Sorry.
I voted a aye.
There he is. John, you're champion.
A dollar short.
Finally.
Okay, announcements. I don't even know if we had any at the last meeting. I've got the minutes here, I mean, the agenda here. No, we didn't have any announcements at the last meeting. General correspondence, again, there was none. Future agenda items, we've already taken that up because the one that was said was the major projects that we're working on and we had talked about potentially having a third meeting per month and we agreed on that. And this was at the prior meeting that we just had on the 23rd. So, and the next meeting is, I don't know if you, if anybody else wants, well, no, because we've got to redo this. That's the mind bend on this. Our next meeting is July 14th, same time, same place, Zoom meeting, 6:30. Anybody else have anything else? We are adjourned.
Excellent.
Hey, good night, folks.
Good night.